It's six o'clock. At this time, I called a regular meeting in the Perry City Council, January 19th, 2016 to order. We have a call. Item three is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you would please rise. I'd like to call on Councilman and Reverend Robert Jones with Grace Church, their youth pastor, to give us the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for the privilege to live in the United States of America, the state of Georgia, and the city of Perry. Lord, Father, we ask now that you fill this place with your Holy Spirit, Lord, and that you just lead and guide us, Lord, as we attempt to serve your city, our God, the city of Perry, in a way that would best glorify your name, in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call on Councilman Riley Hunt to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item four, a community partner updates. We are very pleased to have Dr. Mark Scott, Superintendent of the Houston County School System, with us this evening. Dr. Scott, welcome. Absolutely.
Yes, I would like to take a minute, a minute or two of your time to share with you some information about the proposed East SLOST referendum for the 2017-2022 East SLOST. We're currently in the fourth year of the East SLOST that was passed back in 2012, and that referendum will be on the ballot in March 1st election of this year. And of course, early voting starts here in a few weeks, on February the 8th. But our purpose here today is just to inform you of the projects, and I'll talk to you very specifically about those projects that are proposed for the 2017 East SLOST here at Perry. And I'd like to start off by just saying that we try to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and then we make sure that when we propose projects, that we complete those projects. And we've done some of the, placed some of that information on our website, and we're continuing to work. That should give some visual presentations. So if you'd like to visit our website on the East SLOST, we have some slides there that would be very helpful for you to see the projects that we've accomplished. East SLOST has been a major funding mechanism for the school system and for the municipalities and counties as well from the SLOST perspective. But for us, since 2002, we have constructed almost 1.7 million square feet of classroom space. We've added over 700 classrooms, which is a third of our classroom space. We've also renovated over a million square foot of space in our facilities. And thanks to that method of taxing us, a continuation of a one-cent sales tax that would be, that we'd be asking the voters to approve. And that allowed us to build C.B. Watson and Langston Road Elementary School. It's allowed us to do a complete renovation on the old Lynnwood Elementary School there in Warner Robbins. It's also allowed us to go in and do some secured vestibules in our schools. Some of our schools were not a good fit for doing that. So in those locations, we were able to put cameras and buzzers at the doors so that there is a staging area for people to get in and out during the day, so that people don't have access to get into those schools. And we were able to do that at 22 of our facilities. We also put air conditioning in our schools about the same time. So if you went to school at Houston County prior to about 88, you didn't, you didn't go to school in an air-conditioned classroom. And but unfortunately, when you put something in at the same time, they all wear out at the same time. So we've been faced with replacing those. And during this current East SLOST, we've replaced 16 sites, HVAC at 16 sites, and we hope to do an additional eight in the new SLOST if we're so lucky as that pass. This time, we're continuing to look at safety and security as one of our priorities. And our alarm intrusion panels are the same way as our air conditioner. They're all put in about the same time, and they all become obsolete about the same time. So we're looking at replacing all those. We're also updating and replacing the security cameras in all of our facilities. And we're also at a point where we're going to have to do some renovations to our fire protection equipment, our alarm panels and fire alarm panels and those kinds of things. And we will be doing that at 31 facilities. I failed to mention earlier when I was talking about the square footage that we renovated and that we had constructed. But overall, we manage 4.5 million square foot of facilities in this county. So there's a great deal of management that goes on there. And a number that you might be surprised about is that the average age of our buildings is over 30 years old. And so even we, even though we've had a lot of new construction, we've had a lot of growth, we're continuing to operate buildings that are in need of repair and in need of updating. And we work closely with the state to make sure that we're receiving our entitlement money. And a lot of people don't understand, sometimes when we do our needs assessment, we have to identify those things that are wants and those things that are needs, and then we align those with what we are able to get from the state. And we certainly want to earn all the dollars we can to bring into this community so that our taxpayers don't have to foot the full bill of those things. One of the big projects that will be going on for us in safety and security is also access control with driveways. Many people drop their kids off at school now. They don't let them ride the school bus. And we're transporting about 15,000 students a day. So that leaves another 13,500. We had a little over 28,500 students that are riding in cars or walking to school. And Tucker Elementary School and Kings Chapel are two schools that have a big need to do improvements for driveway access and parking and making sure that parents are able to pick kids up safely. We'll also be looking at some driveway improvements and some parking and drainage improvements at Perry High School. And that athletic facility there, where the softball field and the baseball field are, there's a gravel park, parking area across the street, and it's really low. And so we're looking to do some improvements there. We're also looking at building a competition gym. Last year, we had to host the Warner Robbins High School State Playoff Game at Veterans High School because that's the only high school in our facility, in our community, that the high school meets the Georgia High School regulation, or the gym meets that regulation, to be able to host a high school playoff game there. And so we are planning to put competition gyms at all the four schools that do not have them. And we were so fortunate to be able to purchase four acres of land here off of 41 that's just there in front of Perry High School, in front of the football field. And so our plans are is to put a competition gym for Perry High School there on that side. Perry High School is also one of the few high schools in the community that does not have a field house or a dressing area that's adjacent to the football field and part of that complex. And we're looking to make some improvements to that stadium, including a field house and doing some improvements with their track. Their track is in need of some improvements, and we're in our need of some restroom access on the visitor side as far as that stadium goes. So big things going on there. Also, as we go forward, we'll be doing HVAC renovations in phases, and Perry Middle School is part of that. You know, sometimes when you start thinking about the age of schools, and you don't realize how quickly the schools are up for remodels. And that's one of the big projects that we're doing currently is a remodel on Houston County High School. And many people will say, oh, it seems like just yesterday that we built Houston County High School, and we built that in the early 90s. And so they're eligible for state dollars, and we're doing a major renovation there. We're also, a lot of people in Perry have been happy to know that we're building a new stadium so they can get Veterans High School out of their stadium. And so Perry is a little anxious about that, and you can understand it's hard to play and have another high school go to your campus and cover up your mascot and have a game there at your stadium. So they're anxious about, are really excited about getting them out of there, I think. And so we're excited about that project as well. And if you've not visited that site down in Warner Robbins, there off Cohen Walker, that stadium, the retaining wall on the north side is complete there. We're pouring this afternoon about half, they're about halfway down on the south side of the stadium. And once they get that completed, you'll start to be able to see real progress there. And we're very proud of them being able to stay on track with all the rain that we've had. And they were fortunate enough to get the drainage in prior to that big rain. And so over the holidays, you know, when many places were standing in water, that site of where the actual field is going to be was dry. And we were able to pour concrete on January the 6th up there and drive concrete trucks out there on the field where the, where the rain had been so many days in a row there that we were thinking there was no way they'd be able to pour, but they were able to. So we're excited about that project. Veterans High School is also growing, and you know, that area is growing. And we're looking to do a 700-student addition onto that school. You know, they're, I've been saying for several months now that Veterans High School will surpass Warner Robbins High School. And I looked this morning, and they're one student difference. Warner Robbins is still one student bigger than Veterans High School. So I think Warner Robbins was at 1512, and Veterans High School was at 1511. And so they're fast, fast growing there. And there's a lot of land in that area. And I think that, you know, we'll continue to see growth coming this direction, coming south. And there's almost 600 acres that's just to the east of, excuse me, to the west of Veterans High School in that block that runs from 127 up to Woodard Road, Old Perry and Moody creates that square. And so we're looking at growth in that area and looking for a new elementary school that will provide some relief. Matt Arthur is continuing, you know, we rezoned Matt Arthur here a couple of years ago, and they're already moving back up into, they've already moved back into the 700s, and we look for them to continue to grow. For years, Eagle Springs Elementary has been our largest school. Quill Run and Matt Arthur have kind of gone back and forth, being the second, third largest school among elementaries. Bonner Elementary surpassed them last year. This year, Purdue Primary has surpassed them. And that growth along the 96 corridor is really amazing right now. There are 170 apartments going up there within a mile of Purdue Primary, and we expect that to continue to grow. So we are proposing a new elementary school that will be in that area. We've not decided whether we will be east of 247 in that area, or if we would be east and south of 96. But certainly got a lot of growth going on there. And from the state, we're earning entitlement money to be able to construct a new elementary school at that location. At this time, and I still got a lot of different things, I'm going to be respectful of your time and provide an opportunity for you to ask any questions that you may have about our proposed projects and/or about any of the projects that we have remaining. And the big project that we have remaining on this current SLOST is the central bus facility. And you know, that will go there at 96, adjacent to the stadium. And we're hoping to break ground on that in the next six months. And that will provide us the first opportunity to really have adequate space for our 200 bus fleet and to be able to accommodate the maintenance needs of those buses. Another little known fact is our average bus age is 12, 12 and 1/2 years old. We travel about 3 million miles a year with those buses, transporting almost 15,000. And the big number for us is replacement buses. In the last five or six years, we've gotten one replacement bus from the state. And you kind of do the math there if you've got 200 buses and you're hoping to keep decent buses on the road. And you know what a car looks like after you've driven it 12 and 1/2 years. And you can only imagine after 150 kids during two routes of buses have, you know, run through a bus. And so we're struggling to meet those needs. And one of the things that was changed in East SLOST is the allowance of buying buses. In there, we can now purchase buses. So we are proposing a new East SLOST to be able to start purchasing a line item in our budget to be able to start purchasing some buses to make some replacements. And that would take the burden of replacing those off of the local tax, you know, taxes. And for your information, the state is only funding about 14% of this year's budget of transportation costs. So we're required to provide the transportation if they live outside a mile and a half radius of that school, but we're not, not receiving the funds to support that effort. So big project, and planning to continue technology in this new project. We've been a lot with technology in this current East SLOST. That's been a very important tool for us this, this time, where we had kind of gotten behind on technology because again, there's no funding source for technology in the state budget. And so this has really helped us to be able to address the needs as far as that goes. And we've put lap, mobile laptop labs in every school. We've put document cameras in every school. And every classroom has interactive board connected to a classroom computer so that students and teachers can interact with electronics.
Dr. Scott, have you seen a correlation between the increase in testing scores and the augmentation, if you will, of IT purchases in this current SLOST?
Well, what is, you know, one of the things that we face, that we're constantly facing is our testing has changed so much in the last couple of years that I don't know that you can make many inferences from our testing at this point. I can tell you, student engagement has proven to improve achievement over and over again in most any research you want to look at. And we have seen a significant increase in student engagement through that. You know, we're, just talked to the state schools superintendent earlier this afternoon, and you know, there's really a lot of effort right now on really figuring out where we are with testing statewide and, you know, what, what amount of testing is appropriate for our students and what amounts too much, and what is the purpose of testing? Is it to measure what students know? Is it to measure what the teachers are doing? And those kinds of things. But we've seen a significant change in, in the formats and testing. So the test that we were administered last year was the first time that we had taken that test. And so we're still working to make sure that we're aligned with our curriculum and that kind of thing. But we can certainly say that our students are more engaged. And really, it's about meeting students where they are. And for many students, they were coming out of the world they live in every day to go to school, and they were leaving the technology that they had access to outside of school and not being able to bring that in. So through a combination of resources that we purchased and resources they already had through our BYOD, which is Bring Your Own Device, we've opened that up. And the thing that the East SLOST has done is allowed us to build an infrastructure of wireless network in our schools so that any device can be used in that school, whether it's the teacher's device, whether it's the student's device. It's also allowed us to manage our content. We're always worried about what kids can access, what people outside can access. And so it also allowed us to put some security measures in place to manage our content as well.
Are you going to augment the bus facilities or replace them with the new facility?
We're building a new facility on, just adjacent to the stadium. That's a 46-acre site. And right now, our facility, we don't have enough space to house our buses in any of our facilities. And so we end up just leaving buses at different locations. You'll notice if you go by Perry Middle, some buses parked there. Fagan Mill, you'll notice buses parked, you know, all over the community. And we often have to outsource mechanical problems and that kind of thing. So we're, we're looking to be able to address some of those needs. And believe it or not, you know what the one here in Perry looks like, but the one in Warner Robbins looks worse. And you know, we had, I know over the Christmas holidays, we pumped about 50, or vacuumed about 50 gallons of water up off the training room floor there in Warner Robbins because we've got a drainage issue there with rains. We have a heavy rain. And so we're really hoping to be able to get into that facility and really be able to provide, you know, the employees a reasonable place to come and park their vehicles and then to get on our buses. And then also allow them the ability to be able to park the buses. You won't believe the time it takes to park those buses when you're having to park them, you know, a foot apart. And there's not adequate space to park them. And so we're excited about that. And that's something that's long overdue for us.
Good. I'm glad to see you.
Any other questions? We got a lot of stuff going on, a lot of projects going on still, and a lot of things to come. You know, one thing that I'm very proud of is that we're, the last year's ranking, we've not seen this year's, but last year, we ranked 163rd out of 180 school districts as far as our millage rate, our school millage rate. And that means that 162 other school districts have a higher millage rate than we do. And we're not, when you look at a per people ability to raise taxes, you look at the counties surrounding us, the counties that are in our RISA area, and only county with a lower ability to raise taxes per, or to raise a tax dollar per pupil is Jones County. The other counties around us have more of ability as a per pupil tax potential, I guess you would say. And oftentimes, you know, people refer to us like we've got the magic pot, and we don't have that magic pot of money. It's really a good management by our board, and they deserve the credit for that. Any other questions? I do have some brochures that I'll leave with you if anybody would like what I've got some. And that brochure's kind of got projects on the inside of lifting it up and details about the other. Jimmy, is anything I left out?
No, don't please. Mr. Senator, you mind if I speak just very quick? Jimmy Autry, and I'm a community volunteer. My role here is the Committee for Excellence in Education we put together. While the school board representatives, I should probably say that Dr. Scott and I are on tour as we're going every place we possibly can to tell this story. And obviously, you hear the facts from them. But from a public perspective, all we've added is to say that we need to ask people to vote yes, to do what you can do to continue the tradition. And it's very quick. I will take just a minute to say it. A yes vote is based on a couple of things, three things. Number one, best school system anywhere you might find. We got a good one. You don't ever want it to be anything but the best. Number two, you heard, and I'm reiterating, that they did a needs assessment. This is not about wants or nice to have. You obviously heard a lot of detail about needs, and we're addressing needs in all this. And the reality is that, and this word was said as well, this will be the, let's see, we've had 19 years of SLOST, goes back to 1997. So four SLOST got a yes vote. And what we're really doing is asking for a yes based upon something I think all of you would agree with, and hopefully everybody in the community would as well. The school board has been extremely good stewards of the money provided to them. And so we're just asking for the yes vote. We got a lot of presentations going on. We've got a lot of resolutions of support that are happening and those kinds of things. We've got a community meeting set up for Thursday night. We're going to get out the vote and do a little advertising along the way. As a matter of fact, if anybody wants to look at any of the details, HoustonCountySLOST.com has all the information we have about the yes vote, has all the information you've heard in great detail, the presentation that we heard about tonight, anything that somebody might like to find out. They can probably find the answer on HoustonCountySLOST.com. If there's another question, there's a question box there, and if they present it, we'll give them an answer for that, too. But we just state the continuation of SLOST. It doesn't change the procedure. We'll just end one SLOST and start the next one. And so we're asking for yes votes. Thank you all so much for letting me speak and take a little bit of the time along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Autry. Dr. Scott, anything further?
No, sir. Thank you.
Well, I congratulate you and your team on providing the quality education in this county that is so desperately needed in this state and for remaining at the top of those charts. That's very important, and it is one of the key economic drivers that brings industry and commercial and residences to, to our county. And that doesn't go unnoticed by this, by this council or this community. And we appreciate the efforts that you continue to put forth, and we wish you well in your efforts in this East SLOST.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item five, recognitions and presentations. We have a presentation to Mayor and Council from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. Mr. Aaron, you've got people here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Jimmy Dykes with the Georgia Association of Water Professionals, Ms. Sharon Kettleb with ESG, Mr. Chad McMerron with ESG, and Mr. Darren Taylor with ESG. In light of all the things that are going on with the water system in Flint, Michigan, you know, it brings the water industry to the forefront of everybody's conscience. But we're just grateful tonight that we're here for good things and not having to explain to people why bad things are going on. But Mr. Dykes is here to recognize the city and ESG for their hard work in ensuring that we remain in compliance with the rules that EPD specifies. And I'll present Mr. Dykes.
Thank you. My name is Jimmy Knight. I am the Chair of the Georgia Water and Wastewater Institute, and also a member of the Georgia Association of Water Professional Executive Committee. Those of you who are not familiar with the GAWP, we're a not, we are a not-for-profit organization founded in 1932 with memberships over 4,000 water, wastewater, stormwater system operators and managers, municipal and industrial officials, environmental managers, civil engineers, environmental engineers, scientists, manufacturers, contractors, elected officials, and others concerned with Georgia's water resources. Our membership consists mainly of professionals who implement the state and federal water supply, water protection, and water resources laws and regulations. GAWP is dedicated to the exceptional professional education, dissemination of sound technical principles and scientific information, increased public understanding, and promotion of valid public laws and programs. GAWP recently recognized the city of Perry and ESG by awarding their laboratory with the Laboratory Quality Assurance Award in drinking water for systems serving between 10,000 and 100,000 population. This award was announced at our fall conference in November during the awards luncheon. The purpose of this award is to annually recognize laboratories that have demonstrated outstanding quality assurance and quality control programs and to encourage a professional advancement of laboratories within Georgia. This process provides an avenue for peers to exchange ideas, circulate technical expertise, and offer productive feedback. All nominations for these awards are received and selected by the GAWP Laboratory Committee. After completing, all the competing laboratories are contacted by an inspection team and required to submit prior to the scheduled inspection a copy of the laboratory's quality assistance program for review and pre-inspection checklist. All the inspection teams are volunteers, and they are not paid anything. Excuse me for reading it, but I have so much I have to remove. During the fall conference, the city of Perry and ESG was also recognized for the Gold Award for Collection Systems, Gold Award for Collection System Excellence. The city employee, city of Perry employees received a 2,000 Gold Award by earning a quantitative inspection score of 95 out of 100. This is the fifth year that the city of Perry has entered the Gold Award Program, winning Gold Awards in 2012, 2013, 2014, and a Silver Award in 2011. This award reflects the caliber of employees working with the collection system and your exceptional leadership and management. Also during the fall conference, the city of Perry and ESG was awarded the Silver Award for Distribution System of Excellence. The purpose of this award is to annually recognize water distribution systems that have been operated in an outstanding manner. The GAWP Distribution System Committee sponsors this award and wants, and that wants to participate, and all utilities that want to participate. The water distribution program focuses on the furthering performance of distribution systems across Georgia and achieves to support water utilities across Georgia to improve the performance and safety and reliability of the distribution system. One more. Each nominated system receives a package that includes distribution waters audit sheets and evaluator's guide. The system manager reviews these in order to gather the appropriate information. The city of Perry should be proud of its laboratory, collection, and distribution system staff for reaching this impressive level of achievement and for being the 2015 recipients of the Georgia Association of Water Professionals Laboratory Quality Assurance Award, Gold Award for Collection System Excellence, and Silver Award for Distribution System Excellence. That's what I had prepared. Now we're going to speak just a little bit. In the news, you've read about Flint, Michigan. With these awards, you can rest assured, your citizens can rest assured, that this mayor and this council and all of your employees have done their due diligence. And what happened in Flint won't happen in Perry. And you need to take time and be proud of yourself and proud of your employees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And the other two?
Yes, I have, I'm a 38-year veteran of water utilities and wastewater utilities. And let me just briefly explain to you, these are hard awards to achieve. It doesn't take but one bobble on one shift that you won't get it. So this is an excellence award, not just for one day, not for one week, the entire year.
Thank you, sir. We have always prided ourselves on hiring quality people. We also pride ourselves on hiring quality companies to assist us in carrying out the requirements that we have, not only to meet the minimum qualifications for the Environmental Protection Division and the people who regulate these things, but ESG has done a stellar job for us in several different aspects of providing quality service and has, continues to do that. And I want to thank Ms. Kelly and Ms. McMurray, and everybody on your teams that continue to make sure that we do this. We don't take this lightly. These three awards are fantastic. It is to the point to where children in the school systems and in our homes, where does water come from? The faucet. And you can drink it. It just, anywhere in Perry. And that is, that is wrong, but it's still a good thing when people assume that the water is of a quality nature, and we are no stranger to that. I want to extend my personal thanks for the job that you do, and thank you, Mr. Dykes, for coming and presenting these awards. That's amazing. Five years in a row for the laboratory, for the distribution, and for the collection systems. That covers it all, doesn't it? From that standpoint, and we are appreciative of that, and we, I rest very well at night knowing that anytime I need to hydrate myself, I can do it with a clean conscience from that standpoint. But congratulations. Ms. Kelly, would you like to say anything on behalf of ESG? Chad?
First of all, Council, thank you for acknowledging our hard work, but I couldn't do it without my team. The guys we have, and of course, the support from the city that we receive, it couldn't be possible to achieve these levels of these awards without you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick introduction, Mr. Dale Bailey, he's new to our staff. He's representing our natural gas department as natural gas supervisor. So, Council.
Mr. Bailey?
I'm happy to be here. Actually, I'm selling in very well. Me and my wife plan on moving into the area. She is a school teacher, math special. She's throwing it out there. But I'm happy to be here, and I'm more than willing and able to make you have a distribution system that you're proud of, and that you feel confident with the guys out there working on providing you natural gas throughout your city. So, thank you very much for having me here.
Welcome to our area. And the City of Perry is an excellent place to buy a house and move into.
And we finally found motive about it, y'all.
That was hard to do. I think y'all are trying to outfit a professional football team or something. But welcome. Welcome. Glad to have each of you. And again, congratulations on these awards. They are fantastic, and we're so proud of the job that y'all continue to do, and that you're doing it on behalf of the City of Perry and the citizens of Perry. Thank you very much. Item six, appointments to boards, authorities, and commissions. Item six A, we have council member Hunt was re-elected, and as such, he has several appointments that he is the privileged to make. Council posted two District Three appointments. You've got three that are remaining. Mr. Hunt, the Perry Planning Commission, Perry Area Convention and Vision Bureau Authority, and the Perry Public Arts Commission, are you prepared at this time to make any of these appointments?
All have been, except the arts, and I'm still working on that, and I think I have someone that's interested in it, and we'll be announcing that at a later time.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Item seven, our citizens with input. Is anyone present here who wishes to address council at this time on any matter? Mr. Gilmore?
Just so we can officially have it on the record, can Mr. Hunt indicate who is appointed?
Who are your appointees?
For Perry Planning Commission, I'm going to have to check my records to be sure I know that myself. The planning and zoning is Mr. Martin Bealum. And I'm going to have to check the Perry Planning Commission. I don't recall.
Okay.
But she has been contacted and has agreed to serve.
Here I am. So sweet.
Thank you very much.
And what is your name, ma'am?
My name is Kimberly Nguyen.
Thank you very much for agreeing to serve and for doing such a stellar job on this particular authority. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Sorry, I forgot your name. When you get as old as I am, you're going to forget a few things.
Very good. Anything else? Mr. Gilmore? On that, sir? Okay. Item seven, citizens with input. Is there anyone present here who wishes to address council at this time? Thank you. Item eight is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA Section 36-67A-3C. Item eight A, we have before us an amendment to the Perry Land Development Ordinance, Section 106, signs. Mr. Gilmore?
Mayor and Council, you had received a couple of months ago a recommendation from the Planning Commission to amend the City of Perry's sign ordinance. You have requested various bits of information, had various discussions with it, and also improved the moratorium on any sign variances until you all, in conjunction with the public, were able to complete the review process and make your final determination. The document's been provided to you. It addresses the items that you all have talked about, as well as what's recommended from the Planning Commission, and it's time now for the public to have any comments, if anyone does.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Gilmore concerning this proposed ordinance amendment? Hearing none. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for the amendment to the Perry Land Development Ordinance, Section 106, signs?
Do we have a copy of what that is?
Uh, yes.
How are we going to comment if we don't know? Y'all just stating, you know, numbers up there, but you're not giving us anything to go by.
Mr. Gilmore, do we have any copies of the ordinance available?
Yes, we do. Take a look at this one, and we'd be happy to get you copies.
Well, I mean, you know, if we want to comment on something, we need to know what we're commenting on.
We have been discussing the sign ordinance for the last two months that I'm aware of in multiple open meetings, and we have had several changes that we have discussed. And I know the Perry Planning Commission, when they looked at it, had some opportunities for the public to have input. And we have discussed this in some detail, like I said, in numerous previous meetings. And I apologize if you've not had an opportunity to look at it, but it is not new. This amendment is not new, even though it is a proposed amendment with some changes in there. And tonight, we are having the public hearing concerning this particular sign ordinance with an opportunity for people to speak for or against. We will not vote on it tonight. As is our process, we will have the public hearing on this particular ordinance tonight. Council will take any input from the public this evening, as we have from the public all along. And then, at our next regularly scheduled meeting, we will have an opportunity for council to take action on this particular amendment, one way or the other. And that has been the process that we have used for quite some time, and I think that follows the letter of the law, does it not, Mr. Holber? Thank you. So, I will ask, we're still in the public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for the amendment to the Perry Land Development Ordinance, Section 106, signs?
I think y'all have taken a lot of freedoms away from your businesses. I really do. Every day, that's all I hear is more and more of our freedoms being taken away.
And your name, please, sir?
I mean, you know, what did us veterans fight for? For city governments, county governments, state governments, federal governments to take a freedom away every time we turn around. I commend our men and women in the military nowadays, especially for volunteering, because it's sad what this country's become. I apologize to my kids all the time that our generation is leaving a worse country than what we were born into. Our generation before us was the greatest. And far as I'm concerned, we've gotten fallen way short of that. But every time you turn around, it's another freedom taken away. And that's something I think y'all need to think about. You know, a hard person trying to make a living. I don't want a big gaudy sign out there, but something to promote your business, you know? Because if people can't find your business, you're not going to have any business, and after a while, you just be out of a job. So I think that's something that everybody needs to look at, is how much freedom is being taken away from everybody. Because that businessman is paying taxes every day he's keeping this city running. But y'all don't seem to think about stuff like that.
Mr., at this point of order, is this for or against? Is, we're in the for section of the comments right now. Mr. Bailey, are you speaking for the ordinance?
No, I'm speaking against it.
Okay.
I mean, you know, like I say, I don't, you don't need big gaudy signs, but a business needs to be able to advertise their business.
Would it be okay with you if I move your comments to the against side when I get to that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't know we were going to have one against.
Yes, sir. I explained the process, but we will have a for and an against. Anything further?
No, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Does anybody wish to speak for this amendment?
Question for you on this.
Please state your name, sir.
Mark Hamby.
Thank you.
Of 106.2 definitions. Everything filled under this are air and gas-filled objects, air and sign area, attention-getting objects, onings, banners. Is all that not going to be allowed? Is that what this is?
That's a definition of what that describes in that particular section.
But under that, is that the things that are not allowed by the city?
Mr. Hamby, I would need to look at the specific one that you're referring to.
Yes.
The answer is yes.
So, everything?
I've got it. I've got it here.
So, everything here is not allowed?
That's, that's, that's not everything in the definitions. The definitions only define what the item is that'll be addressed in further parts, and there is a section on in the sign ordinance that talks about what will be prohibited specifically. The definition is just defining what it is, because you're outlining banners there, but banners are going to be permitted. So, that's just the definition of, so that everybody understands what kind of signs as you're working through each one of those districts defines, so.
Again, would anyone like to speak for the amendment? Please state your name.
Terry Walker, 800 Evergreen Street, Perry, Georgia. I've had the privilege in the past to serve on the Planning Commission, the Downtown Development Authority, and I'm currently on the Perry Main Street. I have attended the Planning Commission meetings on this item. I have attended some of the work sessions with the council. I've found the sign ordinance to be very well thought out and great attention paid. I also am a property owner of businesses downtown, and I'll tell you, the one thing I want to see are my properties occupied, and I do not see anything in this sign ordinance that would prevent those properties from being occupied. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Anyone else wishes to speak for? Thank you. Is anyone present who wishes to speak against the amendment to the Perry Land Development Ordinance, Section 106, signs? Mr. Bailey, I will insert your comments at this particular place in the minutes. Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Item nine are consent agenda items. Council, you have before you, and they have been provided, a 9A for council's consideration the minutes of the January 4th, 2016 work session meeting, the January 5th, 2016 pre-council meeting, the January 5th, 2016 council meeting, and the January 11th, 2016? It says 15. The 2016 called work session. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented. There's a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion, changes, deletions, additions to these minutes? Hearing none, all of them favor, raise your hand. Did you raise your hand?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I didn't see it quick enough.
Right hand, too.
Very good. Item 10 is old business. Item 10A is any old business from the mayor? I have none. Item 10B, any other old business from council members? Ms. Bynum, Grace?
I have none.
Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. 10C, is any other old business from the city manager? Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. And 10D, is there any other old business from the city attorney? Mr. Holber?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 11 is new business. 11A is matters that have been referred from the January 11th, 2016 work session, called work session, and the January 19th, 2016 pre-council meeting. Mr. Gilmore, is there anything that needs to come before us from the January 11th, 2016 called work session?
No, sir.
Thank you. And Mr. Gilmore, is there anything that needs to come before us for the January 19th, 2016 pre-council meeting?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 11B are ordinances for the first reading and introduction. Item 11B1, council, this is the first reading of an ordinance that will amend the Perry Land Development Ordinance, Section 106, signs. Since this is a first reading and introduction, according to our process and the law, there is no action required by council at this time. Item 11C are resolutions for consideration and adoption. 11C1 is a resolution to amend the City of Perry fee schedule. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you. Mayor and council, in your packet is a resolution that proposes to amend our fee schedule to add a $200 per event on those businesses and/or property owners in the downtown district that fail to follow the process of getting a certificate of appropriateness if they make any type of improvements to the exterior of their building that violates the downtown requirements. that violates the downtown requirements. We talked about this before. You had agreed to proceed. This just enacts the fee. Should you approve this resolution, each property owner and each business in the downtown district will be notified of this action, so they'll be aware and will hopefully avoid not following the procedure. Any owner or business that follows the regular certificate of appropriateness process will not be charged anything.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Counsel, are there any questions of Mr. Gilmore concerning this particular resolution? Again, we have discussed this in several different meetings prior to tonight, and it was your consensus to move forward with this resolution. Hearing no questions. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve or adopt this resolution to amend the City of Perry fee schedule as described.
Someone, second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11D, counsel, for your approval, we're being asked to approve an amendment for a memorandum of agreement between the Middle Georgia Regional Commission and the City of Perry relative to the Perry Public Arts Commission website. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet is an amendment to the existing agreement that the city has with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. Currently, they maintain and update our website, the city's website. The recommendation from the Department of Leisure Services is to set up a separate website for the Perry Public Arts Commission, which will allow them to focus on artistic events, activities that they're doing, other events around the city, for example, the plays at the high schools, those type of things. The agreement provides for that to be taken care of with a one-time setup charge and then an annual maintenance. The funding for this will come from the hotel motel tax, and we recommend to you to so approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. The one-time development fee of $3,290 is that fee for the regional commission to set the website up. The annual maintenance cost is $840. Mr. Gilmore said that it will be, the source of funding for that is from the hotel motel tax. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We already have, counsel, you may remember, an existing agreement with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. They have set up and maintained our current website, and this is an amendment or an addendum to the memorandum of agreement between the Middle Georgia Regional Commission and the City of Perry to modify it for the actions thus described. There are no questions of Mr. Gilmore concerning this. At this time, counsel, I will entertain a motion that we approve this addendum and amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the Middle Georgia Regional Commission and the City of Perry relative to the Perry Public Arts Commission website as described.
Someone move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11E, counsel, we have a request from the Perry Downtown Merchants Association and the Perry Arts Center Committee for the closing of the 700, 800, and 900 blocks of Carroll Street and the 901,000 blocks of Jernigan Street and Ball Street relative to a First Friday event to be held February the 5th, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Major Phelps?
Yes, Mayor. As you stated, on February 5th, the Downtown Merchants will host the First Friday event from 6:00 to 11:00 PM. They are requesting that Carroll Street be closed from Marion Street to Washington Street, and Jernigan Street be closed from Main to Commerce, and Ball Street from Main to Commerce. We will have two officers supporting this event, and DOT will be notified reference to closing Ball Street, block Ball Street. And Mr. Myers is here to have an additional question.
Thank you, Major. Mr. Myers, do you have anything to add?
No, sir. I'm Marty Myers. One of the things we ask for the fee to be waived, I don't know if that's in this discussion or something that's coming up later.
The waiver of fees is something that the city manager has the authority to do on behalf of counsel unless it's an oddball request, and that's not the case here.
And it has been--
But it's a good point. Thank you for bringing it up. Anything further? Major Phelps? Chief Gray? Fire departments in concert with these closures as we normally do from that. Everything okay in your department as well? Counsel, you have heard the request. This is not the first time we've done this for other events. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we grant the request for the street closings as described.
Someone move. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11F, we have a request to proceed with the CDVG, the Community Development Block Grant Administration Procurement Process. There are several things that we're being asked to do. Mr. Smith, will you carry us through this?
Sure, then. Mayor and council, as you are aware, the Perry housing team is in the process of putting together a community development block grant application, or CDVG application. The project area has been defined. It's gonna be in the Sand Hill neighborhood, and we are gonna be requesting $500,000 to pay for the rehabilitation of nine homes on a lane street. Should be a fantastic project. And hoping to be proactive and score as well as possible in this competitive grant application process, we went ahead and completed the procurement process for administration, and it's recommended by the housing team at this time that we approve, that you approve, to move forward with Grant Specialists of Georgia, Inc., in the development and submittal of the CDVG application prior to the April 1 deadline. Does anyone have any questions about the project or what we are asking of you tonight?
Counsel?
I guess the question is, we have three items. Will they be approved individually, or are we gonna approve them as a total part of the procurement package?
Mr. Walker, the, two of the items, the proposed area for improvement does not actually need formal approval. And the approval of local match will come later in a resolution, which will also serve as an authorization to submit the application.
So our approval is a recommended selection of the consultant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted a clarification on that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, you've got the proposal before you. You have heard what the recommendation is from Mr. Smith and our housing team. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the request to proceed with the CDVG administration procurement by approving the selection of the CDVG consultant as described.
Someone move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We're looking forward to y'all getting on that, on board with that, and hopefully, we will have good news to receive that grant. By the way, the local match for this particular grant is $10,000, and that will be coming back to counsel for approval should we get that far in this particular process. Item 11G, counsel, we are being asked to authorize a renewal of a loan with CBNT Bank for the Kumho Tire Project. You have before you, in your packets, the information concerning this, the City of Perry is one of the owners of jointly-owned natural gas with four other cities. We came before you, or jointly-owned came before us last year requesting the initial approval for this. You are aware that Kumho Tire is a new manufacturer that has elected to build in, is it the Softy Industrial Park in South Macon? They are in the throes of trying to finish up that construction. Jointly-owned Natural Gas has the, is the utility for natural gas for that particular industrial prospect. In order to deliver the gas to them, jointly-owned was required, or determined that it needed to build a new natural gas main, steel main. They borrowed the money from CBNT Bank in order to do that, and this is a renewal of a multi-year, multi-phase project that we have talked about before. Because a sitting council cannot obligate future councils, we have to do, by law, Mr. Holbert, correct me if I say something that is not factual, we have to approve these, this debt, if you will, on an annual basis, and the bank understands that, and each of the other cities are doing the same thing. We will continue to monitor this. I sit on the board for jointly-owned natural gas as the City of Perry's representative, and I will be glad to answer any questions concerning this, if anyone has any, at the appropriate time. Having said all of that, at this time, counsel, I will entertain a motion to authorize the renewal of the loan with CBNT Bank of Middle Georgia for the Kumho Tire Project as described.
Someone move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? The proceeds, by the way, from gas sales will repay this debt. For the record, it is the cities of Byron, Cochran, Hawkinsville, Perry, and Warner Robins. They make up jointly-owned natural gas. If there's no other discussion or questions, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11H, we have participated as a city in the United Way campaign, and we have a report for 2016 from Ms. Cynthia Hauser.
The city has participated for a number of years, and last year, it was down a little bit, but I wanted to report that we are back up again, and we had one more participant than we had last year. Of those that contributed, they had the opportunity to put their name in a drawing or wear jeans and tennis shoes. And those that don't normally wear uniforms, a lot of them chose jeans and tennis shoes. Those that did, that are, that wear uniforms, put their names in a drawing, there were three of them. We thought for a while it was only going to be one, but it was three. So I'd like to ask the mayor pro temp to draw that name for a $100 gift card.
And so do the other two people know? Will I be in trouble in the morning?
I don't know. I won't mention your name.
Well, it's on TV.
Oh, okay.
Who's the lucky one?
Alton Ellis.
Very good. Very good.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser. I appreciate your efforts, and also the city employees who do support the United Way. It's a worthy cause. Thank you very much. Item 12, department head items, from the police department. Major Phelps? Thank you. Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. A few opportunities for public input coming up here in the next month or so. As I spoke to earlier, for this community development project, there will be a public hearing on Thursday, February 4th, at 5:00, right here in council chambers. An excellent opportunity to come learn about the program, the project we're putting together, and meet members of the Perry housing team. And then, next week, actually, next Wednesday, January 27th, there's gonna be a regional planning meeting at 5:00 at the Perry Arts Center. The Middle Georgia Regional Commission is putting together a regional plan, and we hope to get public input in regards to where you would like to see the region head, in regards to housing, transportation, economic development, that type of thing. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. From the Department of Public Works, Mr. Aaron?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. From Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Gray?
Nothing.
Thank you. Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. I believe that's everyone. Item 13, a council member items. Ms. Bottom Grace? Mr. Jones?
One item, Mayor. I would like to thank Dr. Scott for being here tonight and sharing with us about the East Plough. As a graduate of the Houston County School System, I can readily attest to the fact that it is one of the best school systems in the state, if not the nation. The only concern I have for you, Dr. Scott, is you have to keep Hope Morrow straight every week. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anything further?
That's it.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
And Mr. Holbert?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 14, the general public items. Is there anyone present who wishes to address counsel on any item at this time? Thank you. Item 15, the mayor items. Counsel, I will remind you that there are some opportunities that we have in the foreseeable future, namely, Friday begins the Georgia Municipal Association's Annual Mayor's Day Conference in Atlanta. I believe most of, not all of us are scheduled to attend. This is an opportunity for each council member to get the required continuing education that we, that we need, that the Georgia Municipal Association puts on for us, but it is also, and just as important, an opportunity for us to network with our comrades, if you will, other mayors, other council members across the state. There's no sense in reinventing the wheel, and we learned, I have learned as much from speaking to others as I have from the classes in a lot of cases, and it is a good opportunity to continue that. We will also have an opportunity, while we're up there, since the Georgia legislative process is in full swing, to meet with our newly-elected senator and representative. We are looking forward to having some time with them. I believe there have been other meetings that have been noted. The next time we will meet will be for a work session on February the 1st, and we meet the 1st and 3rd Tuesdays as counsel, and normally have work sessions the Mondays prior to that, unless it is a federal holiday. I believe that is all I have. Thank you, Dr. Scott, Mr. Autry, for coming in and giving us your update on the East Plough. We're looking forward to the results of that. If there's nothing further, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of real estate.
Someone move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your interest and participation.